Good evening. I will now call the Board of Education meeting to order at 6:30 PM. The secretary will call the role of each board member to determine if a quorum is present. Please respond by saying here.
Dr. Barth Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Mr. Groupie?
Here.
Mr. Kempton?
Here.
Mrs. Moon?
Here.
Ms. Nichols?
Here.
And Ms. Schrager is here.
Thank you. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone from the audience who would like to address the board may do so when the agenda item they want to address is being discussed. Before you approach the podium, you will need to sign in on the sheet provided at the media table. When it is your turn to speak, please approach the podium and provide your name. If you have printed correspondence you want to share with the board, please leave those items at the media table with Mr. Satinon, and he will share those items with the board at the conclusion of the meeting. Sedalia School District Foundation, I don't believe I see anyone. NEA? Thank you.
All right, just a couple of things tonight. First, kind of update on our spring membership drive. We have 11 new members, which puts us over 100, solidly over 100 for the first time. We kind of wavered it at like 95, a decrease with people retiring last year, and so we're excited. Because 11 new members may not seem like a lot, but when I took over three years, two years ago, that's the total we had in Sedalia, 200, was 11 NEA members. And so now that we're solidly over 100, we're pretty excited about that. And we don't really do a whole lot of extra, the fluff. That's, I'm probably the worst person to have in charge if that's what somebody's looking for. A lot of what we do has been focused on vigilance, communication, and support of our staff, and that's what we seem to be the need. And so we communicate a lot with letting them know that your board meetings are televised, and I send all of our members the links and things like that. So it's a lot of communication about what's going on, communicating about, you know, possible agenda items that they might want to pay attention to. That's really been our focus, and so it's exciting to see that growth transitioning to something that we talked, I mentioned and introduced last month. We're beginning, next week, we're going to do our Sedalia NEA thank you card drive. I mentioned that we threw our support behind SCEA's Teacher of the Year. We want to do something a little different, less competitive, focused on making sure that everybody who wants to get a shout out to a special educator in their life, give them that chance. And so we're starting that next week. It's going to run April 8th through the 26th. That gives me a week to prepare the cards and get them ready, get the help to get those ready, because this is the first year, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of kinks to work out. Teacher Appreciation Week this year is May 6th through the 10th. That's when we're going to hand ours out. I know our district at times has done it a week earlier. We, just for the sake of making sure that people can get their thank yous in, and then giving me time to work through the preparing the cards, we're just going to go ahead, time to work through the preparing the cards, we're just going to go ahead and do ours during the actual National Teacher Education Week. Last thing I have is something that I, hopefully it doesn't fall on deaf ears once again, but as always, please, please, please continue to reach out to our teachers and formally, formally ask them, what do you need? Actively listen, there's no two teachers that in the classroom have the same problem. And so a blanket answer doesn't really work for everybody. And so that's why I encourage you, month after month, to please make sure that you're reaching out and asking those questions. You know, Dr. Fraley, I commend you, and then the board specifically, you guys have shown that. You've shown that you do that with giving steps back, you've shown that you do that with focusing on salaries, you know. Having the discussion tonight, from switching from sick and personal leave to PTO is something that many of my members will support as long as it's the same amount of days. And so we appreciate that continuing, you know, asking what do you need? And I urge you to do that, the same thing about what we need within our classrooms. You know, you have a staff here, one of the most educated staffs, workforces you're going to find in all of central Missouri. You know, every teacher has at least a bachelor's degree, masters, multiple master's degrees, specialists, doctorates. You know, they know how to educate our kids. And so asking them, supporting them with what they need, I think is huge. And so I, you know, Dr. Fraley, I believe you have actually started building that culture since you've taken over, and so I just urge you to continue that, because I truly believe, and I'll leave you with this, when you empower teachers, you're empowering students. Empowered teachers empower students. And so I know I say this month after month, but it's something I believe in, and I think that's what NEA stands for as well, as we work with school boards and as we work with central office. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is SCEA.
Good evening. I don't have a whole lot for you tonight. We were pleased to award Melissa Johnson from Parkview with the Outstanding Educator this past week, and Kevin Fox from Smith Cotton High School was our Outstanding Associate. Congratulations again to both Melissa and Kevin, and to all of our building level winners. It was really nice to see the turnout that we had. I thought everything went real well. And then also, SCEA is going to be reviewing our senior scholarship applications for graduating seniors of SCEA members. We'll be doing that at our next meeting, and then we'll be presenting those scholarships at the Senior Awards Night. So, that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. I will now ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda items 4.1 to 4.5, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Items for decision, Mr. Curry, the ancillary health insurance?
Yes, I'm pleased to present the findings from our broker, Holmes &amp; Murphy and their team, and what they brought back to us when they took our ancillary insurance items out to market. Had, I believe, 10 responses for coverage of our different programs that are offered to our staff and our employees. And as you can see, and there's more information obviously in the attachment, but the summary here is quite impressive. If you recall, we were previously bundled with principal for all of our ancillary offerings. Quickly found that what was being presented to us made sense for us to unbundle those items. It's going to present a cost savings to our employees, as well as a cost savings to the district. You can see our board paid insurance, life insurance, goes from $1.40 per person down to 80 cents, which will result in over $72,000 in savings to the district right there. Our dental, the Delta Dental, again, as you can see, came back, they have a better network than we currently have, and also their rate is guaranteed for three years, and it's at a 2% under what we're currently paying, what our staff are currently paying. Similarly, with Vision, the VSP Vision Care does match our current network and is also at a 15.2% lower rate than what we're, our employees are currently paying. And then our other life and disability products, Symetra, overall, when compared to what we currently have, is a better program, and also gives us a three-year rate guarantee and is below our current rate. Very pleased with the work that the team at Holmes &amp; Murphy has done for us in not only this renewal, but our Blue Cross renewal from February. So, our recommendation would be to approve our ancillary health insurance plans for 24-25 as presented with these options.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry?
No, thank you.
If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the ancillary health insurance plans for the school year 2024-25 as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And Mr. Curry, the workers' compensation renewal?
Yes, our representatives from Gallagher took our workers' compensation coverage to market and received the quotes that came back as listed below. Our current provider for workers' compensation, RAS, which is First Dakota Indemnity, came back with the lowest bid at $240,156 for our work comp coverage for 24-25 school year. As you can see, that's just a slight increase from what we ended up paying to renew this current school year with them, after they come in and do an audit, making sure that our payroll, what we provide them now, our payroll, what we predict our payroll to be next year obviously can change depending on hirees and what positions you do hire, as well as what area that they fall in within what type of employee they are. So, we did use the figures from our 24-25 approved salary schedule and what we provided to them, so we anticipate that an audit increase would not be near as much, and so this renewal rate at $240,156 is hopefully pretty accurate and is at a pretty good renewal rate for us. So our, my, or our recommendation again would be to approve our work comp renewal with RAS, First Dakota Indemnity, for the 24-25 school year in the amount of $240,156.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry? I will ask for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
And a second? Did you say second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. And Smith Cotton Junior High Robotics? Mr. Wright? Mr. Wright, there he is.
Good evening. Earlier this fall, we brought a proposal to you about starting a First Tech Challenge team at the junior high. That team Scream sponsored, and we've gone through the season, seen all the costs associated with that, and we've brought to you the official request to add this to the junior high budget for running FTC program.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Wright regarding this program and the addition to that program and the budget as you have in front of you? There's no questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the addition of the Smith Cotton Junior High Robotics Program.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. And additional staffing needs for 2024-25, are you taking that?
That's me again. We've discussed these previously at different times, and I decided to bundle these all into one ask for this item, agenda item. We previously discussed our increased numbers of EL students across the district. We've added teaching staff, certified teaching staff. We currently have support staff and instructional assistants that do support our classrooms. So the three buildings that are getting additional teachers, where Mrs. Brownfield has identified monies in her federal title money that she can pay for us to keep our SIR positions that we currently have. So she's going to pay for those out of her title budget, and we'll be able to keep those positions, but we have to create those positions, which is why they're in this request this evening. So glad to see that that money is there, and we'll be able to continue to support those three buildings that are not getting an additional certified teacher, will get an instructional assistant. We've also previously discussed the need of our wrestling program and how it has grown. Our girls' wrestling program has continued to grow and see some great success, and so having a specified head coach for our girls' program is a need. That'll open up a vacancy likely within the team, or could, within the program, and so we're obviously adding an additional coach. They have more and more competitions that are scheduled at different locations, and so we can't have one head coach in two different places, so. And then the last thing, we had, back early this spring, or I guess late this winter probably, discussed when we added an assistant baseball coach, again, the need for, we probably likely have a need for an additional softball coach. Going ahead and asking for that at this point in time, so that they can try and locate a coach and be ready for the offseason. But same situation as wrestling and everything, you have multiple teams that would be playing at different locations, and so trying to divide your staff to have enough to supervise and be able to, you know, coach a contest would require us to have an additional coach. So those are the three asks for this evening. The three instructional assistant positions, one head girls' wrestling coach position, and one assistant girls' softball position.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry?
Same question I ask on any federally funded thing. Despite the need, there are people who want to leave a large crater where the Department of Education currently is located in Washington. If that were to happen, how long would we keep these title instructional assistant positions open, or I mean, and use them? The need is there.
The need is there, and I think Dr. Fraley alluded to this either last board meeting or the prior one to that. We would have to have some very tough conversations if our federal funding were to go away about, you know, what our local budget could allow us to keep and what would have to be, you know, either cut or not filled at the time, until something changed.
But as it stands now, we can, we can use these people for the next year.
Yep, and Mrs. Brownfield has the money in her budget to cover it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I will ask for the motion to approve the three title instructional assistant position, one head girls' wrestling coach position, and one assistant girls' softball position as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. And next is Ms. Brownfield with the Rosetta Stone quote.
All about Title III this evening. So I am seeking your approval on a three-year quote from Rosetta Stone. We have the opportunity to pilot a year of Rosetta Stone within the EL department this year, and found that the, specifically the data and the reporting to be able to target specific language needs for each individual student was very impactful in having that supplemental resource. So this by no means replaces our EL teachers or our program, but provides an even more robust opportunity for them to work on their language acquisition, not just in the EL program, but also in the other classrooms as well, as they're working on other things. And that's all Title III money.
Where would they be accessing this? Would they be able to access it at home, on a Chromebook?
Yes, they are able to access it at home, parents have access, so they can help support their students as well.
It's not limited to, you could do it on Chromebook or on a, or on an iPad.
iPad, correct.
Any other questions for Ms. Brownfield? Then I will ask for a motion to approve the Rosetta Stone three-year quote in the amount of $60,000 as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you, and you're up again for the Success Ready Students Network.
So this is the second board resolution that you have seen. The first resolution we asked you to sign last year was allowing us to go ahead and participate in the SRSN network, to do the research, to be part of that team and collaborate with the other districts. This federal waiver is now saying that we've done that for the year, we've done our research, we definitely want to apply for the federal waiver with the other districts in our cohort within the SRSN. So we are saying yes, we are moving forward to submit our federal waiver.
Are there any questions for Ms. Brownfield on this? Do I hear a motion to approve the Success Ready Students Network resolution with federal waiver as presented?
So moved.
And a second? Oh, did you? I didn't hear you, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. We move on to discussion, Mr. Curry, the permanent substitute positions?
Yes, this is a concept that's been discussed across the district administration for several years. You know, we were to the point where, and a lot of this is just information in that first little paragraph, I put this out on a message board for, on the Missouri Association of School Business officials, and got a lot of this feedback on what other districts do. Many of them do employ permanent subs. Again, most of them, or most all of them said that the difference is that they offer benefits, health benefits and PTO with those positions. Some of them, again, the placement on salary schedule was dependent, some it was still the same pay that they pay for what you would pay a long-term sub, but then again, you have factor in benefits. So they're really, as far as a cost savings, this isn't really a cost savings thing as much as it would be, you know, you have somebody ingrained in your building that knows the procedures of your building, the policies, they know, you know, how your building operates, and it would also give us another avenue of hiring for a sponsor or a coach to be able to offer, to get somebody in that may not be a certified teacher, but that we would want to put in and work with our program, work with a certain program. You can see what we, you know, what we've spent in, over the last school year, we ran some numbers, and, you know, we paid, we paid our current staff to sub on their planned times, or to sub in, you know, we had paraprofessionals that would sub in a teaching position because we were short subs, and we spent over $130,000 paying our current staff to cover openings last year. We spent over $450,000 paying for substitutes. And I don't, I don't see that need going away, but again, the opportunity is that, you know, you could provide training to a person if they were a permanent substitute that our other subs don't get. And so it offers some, you know, some big positives as far as it comes to knowing that you would have somebody there every day, that, you know, you can schedule them wherever you need them. But again, it's probably, or it wouldn't necessarily take away from our current sub pool, you know, it would have to be the right person. And I don't know, again, kind of the initial discussion this evening was, in the numbers that I pulled as far as substitute requests, obviously at the high school and the junior high, they're our two largest buildings, they employ the most people at both of those buildings, and so they would have the most sub requests on an average basis. They, they have over 130 typically requests in a month at each of those buildings for substitutes, for certified positions only. On average, if you were to look at a month across the district, we have at least 21 requests on, on average, it would be 21 requests a day at least across the district for certified substitute. So I don't know that we need to hire one for every building at this point, but I would think if we were to entertain this, to start with maybe two or three, and then obviously one at the high school, one at the junior high, and then possibly one that would report to an elementary, but that's kind of why this is for discussion as well.
Every year's going to be different, and that's, and so you can, before I went further on this, I'd want to know if you had one permanent substitute at the two Smith Cottons, or just one of the Smith Cottons, and then so on, a permanent substitute at each of the large elementary schools, what that would have looked like with this year's budget? Or if you wanted to even project it with next year's figures, because we are giving raise? But I'm going to assume that from these permanent substitutes, that there would be, that those would be probably the first hired to fill in a position, say, for the rest of the school year?
Could be, you know, that would be something we'd have to look at. We have some retired teachers that we utilize for long-term subpositions, especially at the elementary level. You know, we fill a lot of those with, you know, we give those retired teachers that are certified an opportunity to do those long-term positions, because you know that the quality of instruction is still going to be high. You know, these positions, it would be kind of probably a learn-as-you-go. A lot of the feedback I heard from some districts is, you know, they started with a couple of them, and then they added over, you know, they added over the years. Again, I think it's the right person for the fit, you know, is the, is the way we'd have to look at it, and I think it would, it would behoove us to start small and see how it goes. And obviously, it would be a financial impact that you know is there on the budget, depending on how many we added. That would be easy enough to budget for, but I think when we budget for substitutes, obviously, you know, Dr. Fraley has to budget and has for these amounts in the previous years.
This is, you know, I have to almost laugh at this. When my sister and I were writing our mother's obituary, this is exactly what happened with our mother. She'd been teaching, substitute teaching around various places. She goes into the office and goes and wants to talk to somebody there about, you know, do I need, I want to do this, or do I have to, do I have to, you know, brush up on some classes, go back to Mizzou for, you know, for some brush-up classes? And they said, we've got a teacher that just left with six weeks in the school year. Can you start Monday? So that's exactly what happened. But that's probably where your permanent substitutes would go, is that correct?
It could be. Again, I think if we had a, if we had a retired teacher that was perfect for that fit, you know, maybe that was a subject area that they taught, you know, that might be the first offer. We have, you know, and I put this in here as well, you know, we have 403 certified teachers across the district, and at every building, almost probably daily, you're going to have openings that aren't covered. Even though we have 98 people that are registered to substitute with us, I would venture to say that on average, we have maybe 25 to 30 certified positions that are covered every day. So there are openings all the time that we are covering within the building. We're using paras to sub in the place of the teacher, we're using people on their planned time, we're sometimes dividing up classrooms and sending them to two different teachers where they get, you know, each get an additional 10, 12 kids that day. So, you know, this is just, it's a concept that I think would, it would be beneficial to a point, but again, I don't see it as necessarily a cost savings, but I don't know that it would cost us anything more in the long run.
It would save some, just some administrative costs from knowing that you've got a qualified pool of substitutes that could take over, that knew where, that knew where the restroom was, or the teacher's lounge.
Well, yeah, the longer you have somebody in the building and in a position that is there every day, they learn all of the things that, you know, takes time for somebody to, somebody else to learn and pick up on, and I think you'd see the benefit from it.
In my mind, the object isn't necessarily to do, to use these people for long-term positions, because that takes away some of the flexibility. You're trying to plug, plug the holes that arise at 8:00 AM that you're trying to fill is very problematic for our teams at the building level.
So will you have those substitutes attend PD like they would a regular teacher?
I think that was something we would talk, we want to talk about, is, you know, how many days, what's their work calendar look like? What, I think it's beneficial for them to be able to attend some of those things. Some of it might not be, you know, pertinent to them, but there's certainly, you know, things that they would benefit from as well.
So you'll give them benefits like health and life and retirement? What about paid time off?
Any other questions for Mr. Curry? And again, this is under discussion, will be brought back at a later meeting. Next item under discussion is Dr. Fraley discussing policy 4320 and sick leave.
Yeah, this is something that was discussed a few, two or three years ago, this was brought up at the board meeting, might even been before the pandemic. This was brought up at the board meeting, might even been before the pandemic, I believe, of changing sick leave policy, the days from sick days to, for lack of a better term, P T O or paid time off to allow district employees a little bit more flexibility under the current policy and regulation. Kind of, that never got brought back and then, of course, we all got sidetracked for a couple of years. This is something that in my meetings with staff, with different employee groups as a potential, you know, type of fringe benefit, so to speak, from a recruitment retention stampede standpoint. A few years ago, you know, I had contacted a few districts about that had changed over this process at that point in time. They had not mentioned, they said, we did not see a dramatic difference in absenteeism. So I guess what I am bringing this up for discussion right now is if the Board of Education would have potential interest in that, and I will revisit the situation. We will go back out and look at different policies, different school districts that have changed over to this and see how those regulations are outlined and detailed and bring that back to the board for potential consideration.
I personally feel it would be a good thing to explore, just to take a look at another option. Go ahead.
Ms. Nichols. Unless I'm missing something, what we're talking about right now is just essentially changing what we're calling their sick days.
Yes, but technically they're supposed to be sick.
Right now, technically they're supposed to be sick.
So in this case, it would be more like a, a personal day or a vacation day, so to speak.
Yeah, but other than that, it really doesn't affect anything. They can, we're, we're just right now changing the terms so they can feel more that they don't have to be sick in order to take the time off.
Correct.
They can take it off for other things.
That's correct.
Okay, unless we outline it some other way. Okay, that's fine.
Now stipulations would need to be in place and that's where, you know, there's no sense of reinventing any wheels of looking at other districts that have already pounded this out as far as prior approval for certain things, a limited number of days in a row, potentially adjusting the amount of days. We currently pay, we pay out sick days as an incentive. We've been doing that for several years at the end of the year as a, as a benefit. So all, all things to consider. I look at the base policy for M S B A, which is what we may transition to at some point in time, that ever gets completed. Their base policy just is very vague and deals with just sick days. And basically you plug in the number of sick days that you're allowing. I think a lot of districts manipulate that and create their own version of that base policy.
Are there any questions for Dr. Fraley or concerns?
I think checking into it's a good thing with other districts, see what they do.
I'm all for checking into this.
Scott, talk more into your microphone, thanks.
I'm all for checking into this, but I just, I want to point out that if an employee is sick, I don't want them in this school. If they, if they're sick, especially if it's communicable disease, I, or sickness, I would rather they be at home.
I agree.
I think everybody would agree with that, yes. Any other comments or questions?
All we're talking about is flexibility.
Correct.
It's really what it comes down to.
Bothwell Hospital, a few years ago, switched from having, we had a, we had a vacation bank, a sick bank and a holiday bank. It was like a bookkeeping nightmare, but we switched over to P T O where, but there were a lot of checkpoints and a lot of rules that went with that.
Do we utilize unpaid leave at all? Unpaid leave? I mean, if they exhaust all of their benefits and they still need it, is the next option unpaid leave?
For classified staff certainly, and we have docked employees that have run out of days, yes.
And even in my own business, it's flexibility. If they're healthy, congratulations, you still get those days off. But if they absolutely exhaust what they have, that is the next step for us, is just take the hours.
That's how we operate.
Okay, thank you.
I think it would be beneficial for our families who want to attend their children's sporting events that work for the district to be able to take days like that instead of having to take a sick day as well, so.
Eliminates the game.
Benefits, it benefits. Any other comments? And this will be brought back at a later date?
Correct. I don't, I doubt that I'll have this for the April 15th meeting.
I figured that.
Yeah.
Later date.
But we will bring it back.
Okay. And Dr. Fraley, the last item under discussion is long-term debt funding scenarios.
Yes, and this is not news to the board or to the public. And we've been discussing with our long-term facilities plan, all the projects we have going on. The board in the past year, of course, resigned in agreement with L J Hart to be the financier. So I had L J Hart put together some different scenario just for comparison purposes. And, you know, there's a lot of detail in here. They went back through our current lease purchase projects, including the stadium and the loftus and et cetera. On your first exhibit one, that really simplifies things as far as you can see, if we went for a $15 million funding, a $20 million funding or a $25 million funding, you'll see the estimated cost of issuance difference, the estimated total funds that, that creates for the school district and the average annual payment. We would not pay, we would do an interest-only scenario up until 2027, at which time our current funding projects will be paid for. That opens up our essentially, in layman's terms, our, our borrowing capacity quite a bit. We'll, you know, I'm going to bring this back. L J Hart intends to come on the 15th for something concrete, but it would be my suggestion this time to go ahead and do a $25 million funding. If you look at the average annual payment, I know these are large numbers, but the difference between a $15 million and a $25 million as they have it scheduled is, is just about $300,000 a year. And that, that is at an interest rate of 4.5%, which is where they currently feel. We would come in as a conservative estimate. Keep in mind, you know, I, I've been pushing this off. I've known that we need to do this, but keep waiting and hearing that the Federal Reserve is going to reduce rates. In March, they did not. They keep saying that they're going to start trickling those down, but we're to the point with our projects that we need to move forward and secure the funding.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley? More to come at our next meeting. Okay, moving on to just items for information, Mr. Curry, the Blue Cross Blue Shield K C premiums.
Yes, again, just for information because as we know, we, you all voted and approved our renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield for our health insurance back in February at a 2.9% renewal rate. And so this is just wanting to get that rate sheet on record with the board showing, at that time, they were still hashing out with Blue Cross about exactly where the numbers were going to be adjusted and stuff on our rate sheet. And so the rate sheet is attached there for us, but nothing, nothing more than just information again about our renewal with, with Blue Cross from Holmes and Murphy.
Okay. Any questions? We'll move on to Ms. Brownfield, some information on the Know and Grow Sedalia Pathways Federal Grant.
So the Federal Perkins Fund allows for externship grants and we received notice that we did receive, they're smaller grants, but the Know and Grow Sedalia Pathways Grant allowed us to provide transportation, actually for our professional development we did today in touring the different industries and facilities and our panel discussions. So that is, that was about $700.
Any questions for Ms. Brownfield? If not, we'll let her move on to the Pathways for Teachers Grant.
And then the second externship grant we were approved for, that is, it was done about six or seven years ago where Sedalia, we host a professional development opportunity for ourselves and area districts where teachers are paid $175 a day to come in and get P, professional development regarding our E L program and E L students and how to better support them as in addition to tours of facilities and industries and helping prepare students for career vocational side once they leave us.
Okay, great information. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Brownfield? And Dr. Fraley, we'll let you finish it out with the attendance reports.
Yeah, where are we landing here? Well, on our 90-90, you'll see as of March 11th, we're at 86.61, down nine hundredths of a point from 86.70 in February. That's the number of kids with 90% or above attendance. And then our overall A D A report. As a school district total with pre-K, we're at 90, which is the loftus, we're at 92.47%. K-12, A D A was 92.64%. You can see how the individual buildings did. It's very similar. We're hovering in those low 90s, which is fairly strong. We would like, love it to be a little bit better than that, but as everybody across the country is struggling with attendance, I think while I would like it to be a little better, it's, it could be a lot worse.
That's for sure. Any questions for Dr. Fraley on attendance? Okay, that concludes tonight's agenda. If I can have a motion to adjourn to closed executive session?
Move to adjourn the regular session meeting and notice is hereby given that the Board of Education of the Sedalia School District 200, having duly voted to close its meeting as authorized by Section 610.021, R S M O subsection 1, legal actions, three, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting, 13 personnel records, 14 records which are protected, 18 public safety or law enforcement, and 19 security system and structural plans by law of the Missouri statutes, will conduct a closed meeting immediately following adjournment of regular session meeting on April 1st, 2024 at Smith Cotton High School.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Barth Fagan?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Mr. Kempton?
Aye.
Mrs. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Schrader votes aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a safe evening. We have another meeting on the 15th.